How long?
Can I call the order?
I'll listen to that.
Yeah, well, that was the one.
This is the special meeting of the land use board of the township of Greenwich. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance to the Open Public Meetings Act. In that a notice was published in the Express Times and Star Ledger newspapers. Notice was posted on the municipal bulletin board in the Township Administration Building in Greenwich Township, New Jersey, and notice was filed with the Township Board.
I will call.
Mr. Scadari.
Here.
Mr. Bean.
Here.
Mr. Chichillo.
Here.
Mr. Baylor. Ms. Cullen.
Here.
Mr. Hill.
Here.
Mr. Theyama.
Yes.
Mr. Blunt.
Here.
Ms. Sherla.
Here.
Mr. Bradlaw. Ms. Parker. Mr. Graham.
Here.
Mr. Culture John.
Here.
John, I mean.
Thank you.
That's nice.
And we're the United States of America and so we're about to publish this dance, one nation, one area, in this law, liberty and justice for all.
All right, so. Only order of business today is a review of the proposed ordinance amendment to add data processing facilities. It'll list a permitted use in the R O zone.
Yeah, let me just explain, normally. The board wouldn't get a proposed ordinance at this stage. The board wouldn't get an ordinance until it was introduced at first reading at the governing body. And then the board's job would be to review it for master plan consistency. And there'd be no input from the public they would observe and the the planning board. The land use board would merely say, is this consistent or not consistent with the master plan? The mayor and the township committee wanted the board's input on whether or not this is a good idea. Okay, the mayor and the township committee. Had a had a presentation by the same people who were going to make the presentation tonight. And they thought this was interesting enough that they wanted land use board input. And my advice to the chair is any members of the public who want to ask questions, make comments about this ordinance. They should be encouraged to do the same, so. Really, this is purely to find out if the planning board thinks this makes sense or not. So why don't we just ask the applicant representative to identify himself and then present. This board what they presented to the township committee.
Sounds good, thank you, Mr. Drill, Steven Gruenberg. Attorney in Flemington, New Jersey from Gruenberg Law Office. I represent Bracstone Capital Inc. And as Mr. Drill indicated, we had a very good productive meeting with the township committee with respect to the property. That my client is a purchaser under contract of its block thirty six, lots one, one point oh one and one point oh two. And that's located in the art research office zone. My client is interested in establishing a data processing facility on that piece of property. Interesting thing is that the research office zone permits professional office, research, limited warehouse, telephone exchange and public utility office buildings. But it doesn't specifically permit data processing facilities. The other interesting thing is that the office professional limited research zone. Does permit data processing facilities and it's the only zone in Greenwich Township that does permit data processing facilities. I'm going to introduce my my client and another representative to give you the information about data processing facilities and why this particular area. That is in the research office zone is perfect and particularly suited for the data processing facility. And we did submit to you, and I know it's been posted on the website, our little proposal, but we could also hand that out. We have extra copies.
If you have color, I see people have black and white copies. Some of us printed in color, if you have color copies, why don't you ask any board members would like the color instead of black and white, raise their hand and give us color. We've got pretty colored photos for you. And then that's great. I mean, it's everything.
Is it, is it any different than what was sent online?
It's the same thing.
I'll just look at mine on the screen. Save yourself some.
The copies in black and white.
Yeah, right.
It is the office professional slash limited research. That's why I have that on.
And why don't you reference, there's a letter that your clients have been dated March seventeenth, twenty twenty five, and I believe I think two. He notes. That the proposal. Would be permitted in the office professional limited research zone under ordinance section sixteen dash eighteen C two C. Their request is that the R O zone be amended to also allow data processing centers. And I submitted. Because the mayor asked, what would an ordinance look like? So I submitted a draft. Of a proposed ordinance which I do not see in the. In my package. It was online.
Yes.
Oh, that's attached to that? Okay.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, so it is in the package. And that that ordinance is really. Pretty simple ordinance because the request is actually kind of simple. It's just to add a new line. Under the permitted uses for the research off the zone, which would be L data processing facilities. Just adding the same thing that's already in the O P L R, if I said that right. So, so why don't you go ahead with the presentation and. Sure, I'm going to just introduce Mr. Lou Pector, Principal of Greystone Development. To tell you about his company and what our thoughts are. And then we'll have somebody come up who will actually talk about the data processing facilities. You don't have to be sworn in because this isn't a public.
Correct.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the ability to come here and talk about data centers because it's relatively new to a lot of people. A couple of years ago, we didn't know. What would happen in the data center industry, we spent an awful lot of time getting educated and talking to people that. Were in the market, we don't pretend to be a data center expert. To that end, what we did do is this evolved as a project because we had spent an awful lot of money on this site trying to look at other uses. Some of which you want us here talking about, so we.
I said, don't talk about them.
Yes, so we do appreciate not being in an audience of three hundred people right now. We what we reached out to what we thought was premier data center developer in New Jersey, people had done. And I guess I kind of spoke if I'm wrong, but a lot of things for financial industry, people, banks in the financial industry, news agencies such as Bloomberg, Princeton, Barclays and people like that. They've developed data centers for the last few years for those folks. Deciding if we could get them to team up with us on a site that was appropriate. It is really hard to find a site that's appropriate for data center use. While you have an ordinance that allows for that use in other zones. It's not possible in our view, even if we were able to get equitable agreements and those that develop data centers in those zones. Primarily because of one thing, power. It's critical to have zoning, some use, and it's critical to have power. We have been working through the power studies with Jersey Central Power. We believe there's adequate power, fortunately. Based on the research of my two associates here, we have found that there's very significant power overhead on the western end of the site. That came as a result of another data center site we're developing up in northern North Hampton County. Up near Mount Bethel. As a result of that, we had to do intense studies of all the power flows. From stations to generating station, generating station, such as Gilbert to the south. Lower, lower Mount Bethel to the north. Shawnee, you you name it, there's probably ten stations we studied with power. And we were able to discern that this had the probability of being able to deliver the power for data center on the Voorhees property. The Voorhees property we're talking about is one of the southeast corner. Of one seventy three and seventy eight, it's not the one on the north side of seventy eight. It's on the south side of seventy eight, north side of seventy eight. May look good on paper, but we can't get power to it. The reason. Power is so important, it has to be a direct drop from transmission. The the high tension towers that you see are transmission. The local service that you see along the roads or distribution. It's critical that we have direct connectivity to transmission. For a data center because it requires a sub to drop down a substation and direct input.
So what you're talking about, the first page of your letter. There's a diagram on the bottom and it shows the subject property and a high voltage transmission, that's what you're talking about?
That's exactly right, Mr. Yeah. Oh. As I said, we we did spend a lot of time on physical characteristics of the site, we did spend hundreds of thousands of dollars in the engineering. Trying to buffer the use that would be something you would entertain. And we're not able to get there, we looked at different sites, the different things that. The market changed, the market is not what it used to be. The data center use was one is hit every mark possible, so. You know, here we are trying to. Get garner your attention to be able to take the zoning ordinance and evidence as a permitted use, it's not a.
You want, anyone have any questions for him before he puts his data center expert on? Wanted to, I think they want to hear from the.
Yeah, I don't blame, I don't sort of lie, that's why I have them. No, I what I'd like to do.
I don't want to cut you off.
I'm glad you did. You're trying to say something stupid. This is Mike Pembroke from Russo Development, their premier developer in New Jersey, any any article you read about real estate development in New Jersey, these guys hit every mark, so. We're very fortunate to team up with these these guys as partners in this particular project. So with that, I'd like to introduce Mike Pembroke.
Mr. Pembroke, keep it just tell the board a little bit about yourself, your. Million yard and your data processing facilities and your company and and why this site and this zone would actually be really good use for data processing.
Sure, sure. Happy to. So, being me, I'm Michael Pembroke, Principal of Russo Development. We're a private development company based in Burton County. And we do all different types of development, multifamily, industrial development, and over the last fifteen years, done a lot of data center development. We built probably more than two millions and still own about two million square feet of data centers, mostly in the northern part of the state. We built for companies such as Bloomberg, J P Morgan Chase, New York Stock Exchange. Credit Suisse, which is now U B S and Citibank as well, so a lot of experience building these facilities for financial services firms. So as as Lloyd mentioned, if you look at the the page. Which is this this page here, that is the second one in the presentation, so there's actually three transmission level circuits adjacent to this property. Two thirty K V, one fifteen K V and thirty four and a half K V. Thirty four and a half is more typical of transmission in J C P N L's territory, but having one fifteen and two thirty on top of that is very unique. For a power use and power capabilities. And. The real key now in today's market is also power that's there today, that just there's. Hundred engineering studies out there because now a data center has taken off. A lot of people think they have a data center project and they're lobbying in, you know, studies to the utility. Thinking that they may have a data center and if you don't have the power at your doorstep today, either in a substation or in transmission service. You're really out of the market as far as data centers are concerned because the speed to market is key. And having a study from the utility promising you a data center of power in five years. Is really not, not what we're looking for, and this is this this property, given this location, given the transmission service that's there. Really is is very, very suitable for for data center development. Next page is another. Site aerial that shows the transmission, this is looking from east to west and shows transmission line. Sorry, on the west side of the. West side of the property. As I mentioned before, this is the zoning. Research office zone. You know, the office market's been difficult in New Jersey for for quite some time now and, you know, having an office facility end up in this property would be. Be a long time, I think, before that happens, so like you had mentioned, trying to find something that would be more suitable. And we are, so we also, you know, Lou brought us in to partner on developing this project, so we would we would be owners and developers with with Lou as a expert. So next page, switching to zoning and some of the area zoning and and why there really are limited properties along the transmission lines, we see this page here. There the the red and the green shows the power and shows the properties that would be adjacent to that power. And you can see it's it's limited to an affordable housing zone, preserve farmland and this subject property here in the R O zone. Going through the next slide, really, what is a data center, a data center is a facility that houses computer servers that. Drive various functions for different companies, whether it be A I now is very popular, financial services firms, just mostly in this area, financial services firms are primarily the data. Sure, sure, yeah, yeah. So. Because of the proximity to Manhattan and because of the telecommunication need to have low latency communication between a data center facility. And New York City mostly, that's where a lot of these data centers have existed. You know, within fifty miles of of New York City, so here being fifty sixty miles is still well within the range of of data centers. So again, some of the infrastructure, this this top page here shows some of the books, so data center needs to have power to talk about and also needs to pull. Pulling is very important because you got to pull the servers that are running in the facility, so. Power is is unique, it's bottom picture actually here shows some of the power infrastructure, the transformers, some of the switches, that's your U B S data center. That's on the ground. On the ground with screen walls surrounded. Most of these facilities have, you know, heavier security requirements, screening requirements and, you know, they're really supposed to essentially operate without even really knowing they're there. They don't really want to have a lot of attention called. So the top picture is a picture of these cooling towers that are used to essentially provide chilled water to cool the data center itself. You have to in the dead of winter, you have to have the air conditioning running full tilt, otherwise you don't have air conditioning fifteen minutes, you have temperature runaway, the facility shuts down, so. Cooling is extremely important.
Generators there too.
Yes, so there's there's even reliable utility service, there's U P S, which are batteries that will ride through when you lose. You know, power to the facility until the generator spin up, which usually takes, you know, thirty to sixty seconds for the generators to always spin up and operate, so. This is a facility that can, in most cases, never lose power in any in any regard, and power. So, during the last five or ten years, power has been extraordinarily demanding in data centers. An office building density of power, maybe fifteen watts per square foot is an average office density use. Five, six years ago, a a high density data center was two hundred and fifty watts per square foot, so, you know, ten times what an office building could use. Today, we have a company tomorrow that needs ten megawatts in a five thousand square foot lab environment, that's two thousand watts per square foot of power. So as the technology is getting better, the the video chips, I think this has happened last number of years, power density becomes extremely important and reliability. And this site, this site has. The next slide is just really talking about data centers across the marketplace, you can see heavily weighted towards New York. And along the ninety five corridors where a lot of existing data centers have been built. In New Jersey. So next slide, we don't have to go through the whole thing, but this is essentially a case study of a data center we built for Bloomberg in Orangeburg, New York, it's actually on the border of New York and New Jersey. About a hundred and thirty thousand square foot, a little bit of a smaller sized facility, which we're ready to build another one in South Brunswick now, they outgrew this one so quickly. But this was a building suit. Heavy, heavy cost, heavy investments, so over a thousand dollars per square foot to build these data centers, this this data center cost is about a hundred and fifty million to build. We had leased it back to Bloomberg and they had a purchase option in their lease that we eventually sold this property to them in two thousand eighteen. This had about twelve thousand square feet of office space, which is a little bit unique in in most data center facilities, most data centers have very little office. Bloomberg has other operational. People and 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 needs for physical people being in their data center, so this this one had a little bit of a higher office percentage, but typically there's very little office in these facilities. Our data center we built for New York Stock Exchange is four hundred thousand square feet and we have eighty two parking spaces and there's probably, you know, forty or that are that are used in any given fact. Next couple pages, so the next one here is just the interior of the facility, this is really where the office area is, some of the. Security and entryway, just to give you some idea of what the technology is inside the facility. And this next page here is really what what a data center is, the the upper left hand picture is the what's called the white space. And that's essentially the raised floor computer environment. With the ceiling and this is this is raw before they were installing all of their servers, but it's essentially a wide open floor that provides power and cooling. Through the floor, the upper right hand corner is a picture of some electrical switchgear, which is another electrical component that's a critical part of the facility. And then the lower two pictures are essentially those cabinets and servers that are there running the computers. And the servers that communicate to facility and outside facility. So the next page here is our conceptual site plan, this is about the total profit of thirty five acres. This is a three hundred thousand square foot facility that's on the ground floor only, it's it's a one story facility. Has about a hundred and twenty five car parking spaces. And in the upper left hand corner, you can see there's a substation that's proposed on the property, so even though you're so you're taking power at two thirty and one fifteen K V, you have to build a substation. A utility grade substation on site that essentially will convert the power down to thirteen K V and more usable. Voltages for the for the equipment inside.
Here's the place on that conceptual site plan that chillers and the. Transformers would be.
So. It it, the transformers would most likely be outside of the substation house over here. This is a speculative building and each tenant's a little bit unique, some like the generators inside the facility, some like them outside the facility, this this shows all the equipment essentially inside the facility. But it is likely that once we have a a customer or tenant, they'll have a design to their specific needs.
Does anyone put them on the roof or they all on the?
No, they're all ground mounted. I mean, they're they're happy facilities where they're they're, actually I shouldn't say, are 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 one we built for J P Morgan Chase, named Carl Stat, does have six chillers on the roof. But most of them are ground mounted.
And what are these rectangles, W? Looks like away.
Water quality basins, yeah, W Q B, yeah, they're they're water quality basins which would be, you know, needed for the development, there also are some underground fuel storage tanks shown on this plan. So fuel storage for the generators is is quite important and you'll have most likely multiple fifty thousand gallon diesel fuel storage tanks for the for the generators. Generators, you know, they they exercise them once a month just for maintenance, but, you know, unless an emergency loss of power, they're they're rarely ever ever running. We have generators are twenty plus years old, they're looking brand new because they've just never really been used. Then you see the access to the properties off of one seventy three. Property most likely be burned and and landscaped pretty heavily and the security guard station is providing, you know, access to and from, so. Next page, it's just some design examples of other other data centers really across the country, I mean, they are designed and made to look like office buildings in some cases. Most of our facilities don't have a lot of windows because they don't really want to have any any windows because of security. But, you know, there's an office component to the facility, they certainly would have abilities and its architectural feature.
Not having to tie yourself down, but would yours be more like the neck and niche, New York style, superb, New Jersey, with not that many windows?
More likely, yes. Because, like I said, there there'd be. There's also like wind rating requirements that most data centers want to make sure you have a hundred and fifty mile an hour rating on the facility itself. Roof uplift is important to make sure you have your roof that's secure for that kind of a, so some of these are in other other locations where security is not as critical as usual in New York. So data center development, why is it important? In our experience, most municipalities love data centers because they're a great ratable and you really don't know they're there once they're.
Normally, when the board gets an application from its element, I wait and someone says, oh, economic. Great for the tax base, and I say you can't consider it, when you're considering rezoning, you can consider it. So this is a valid argument, in my opinion, for someone to make that wants someone to rezone the property, so go ahead, I saw. A couple of people's like antennas go up because normally, if someone says something like that, I'm normally all over, but this is one of the rare instances where you absolutely can pay. If there's an increased tax revenue, expect that you can take that into consideration.
Sure. So, like I mentioned, very little traffic. Very little car traffic, very little truck delivery traffic, once the facility is up and installed, you're going to have maintenance, you're going to have servers change out over time, but the majority of all the big equipment is installed when the facility is built. So once it's up and operational, you really, you don't know it's there. And taxes, as as you mentioned, so these, they're they're taxed differently in different municipalities, but mostly across the state, they're taxed like warehouses or industrial facilities, because even though they cost a lot to build. The equipment is highly depreciable and it really is very specific and unique for a particular user, so. You know, the quote value is is less than cost, but, like I said, it's usually assessed like a warehouse. Various data centers in the state are between, you know, three dollars, four dollars per square foot in taxes, so took my three hundred thousand square foot facility, that's over a million dollars in in annual tax revenue.
I guess you're saying it's better than the cornfield they're due, right?
Correct, correct, it's generating no revenue and the, you know, the the prospect of an office coming and and being constructed there is almost zero, in in my opinion. And these facilities here, so this is New York Stock Exchange, the actual trading engine of the exchange is in this building. So the trades happen on on Wall Street, but this building actually transacts all the trades and they have other companies, many, many other financial companies that co-locate.
What about that bottom right hand?
The engine, so that's J P Morgan Chase, that actually used to be an office building that we built for them in two thousand and one.
You blocked up all the windows?
Two thousand and six, yeah, we took out all the windows and blocked them up with with brick, you can't see the cooling towers since they are in the rear of the facility. There's. Besides the front door, not a window in this facility today, we actually had to reinforce the structure as well. We had some, you know, we had to pour concrete down the block to reinforce the beams just to make sure that the the wind loads were adequate for their their use. They've been in there since, yeah, two thousand date their operation. The last. Slide, talked about it already, but the location. Power being key, access to the transmission lines. And, you know, situated sixty miles from New York City is still within the sweet spot, we believe, we track a data center user for a bigger location. That, that's it.
So the, if you take a look at the zoning. All right, if you take a look at the zoning chart that you referenced, it it shows two areas in the O P L R zone. One is orange and one is green. And that's where data processing facilities are actually a permitted use, correct?
Yes.
But they can't possibly be built in those areas because one's in an portable housing project and the other one is preserved farmland, correct?
Correct.
So when we're talking about adding data processing facility into the R O zone. That's because it's proximity to the. Electricity to actually allow this use to take place. And it's in pretty close proximity to the O P L R zone that is already a permitted use.
Yes, that's right.
We don't involve any tractor trailers. We don't have any warehousing in terms of the storage or distribution of product or anything like that.
Schools and and backup equipment to a facility, but nothing that's.
There's not going to be any tractor trailers going out in and out.
On occasion, you might get a tractor trailer delivery, a large piece of equipment, but most of them are box trucks that bring servers and smaller.
Trying to go louder.
Or, sorry, okay, yeah. Yeah, to say that. Once in a while, you would get a tractor trailer if there's a large piece of equipment that has to be delivered, but it's usually a box truck.
And and it's not a distribution facility in terms of distributing products and storing of tractor trailers or or trailers on site, right?
Yeah, no, no parking.
And and the parking will be minimal for the employees that have to be on site. That's a good point, I forgot to ask, and that conceptual site plan?
Yes, a hundred and twenty five parks.
And how do you use? Figure of a hundred and twenty five parks.
So we we, just because of, we want to try to market to as many companies as possible, we are assuming that there will be an office component to this facility, so maybe fifteen thousand square foot. Office component as far as the floor plans, we're going to make sure enough parking that could support office, although, like I said, most of our facilities don't actually have a a large component of office.
But Bloomberg, Bloomberg.
The R O zone offices are permitted, that's. That's correct, so the the zoning you mentioned, you guys are seeking is to add. That whatever the language is in that other zone you mentioned, you want that transmitted in the R O.
Correct.
Which is consistent with the other uses that are already permitted in the R O zone, including. Telephone distribution facility or something like that is one of the permitted uses as well as office space. Are you building any more switchboards for? No marketing for that anymore?
Yeah, no.
Lily Tomlin's out of the job. Just.
Do you have another one of those packets, please?
Sure.
Any members of the board have questions for? Either.
Either uh? I got a couple. Um, yeah, nice and loud, everyone who asked. Are you aware of any uh with your other facilities that you've constructed? Or leased uh any type of safety issues for fire and EMS going in and out? Electrical issues for the fire department or uh people who have medical emergencies inside if EMS has to down any special type of gear in order to access this.
Yeah, there's 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 no um uh requirement for any kind of gear or suiting to to go into any of the facility uh areas, but. Um, and these facilities have very sophisticated fire protection systems. They're all reaction systems. You're gonna have water sitting over the the servers, but they are. Uh, you know, deluge system. Uh, they also have what's called a VESA, uh which is a very early uh smoke detection apparatus. So they're all over the facility. So if you have any server that's starting to get hot, they have temperature readings and any server that's starting to to actually give out even the. Barely detectable smoke that VESA system will pick it up and shut those uh those servers down. Um, so to in all of our facilities, I can't think of any. Any emergency incident that um that occurred um really at all, and and there is no particular uh need to have any kind of suiting to access.
And and we would be would work with the local fire and rescue to be able to build a facility, provide access. It on an emergency basis.
Yes.
And any training that would be necessary.
Yeah, we partnered with the fire.
I'm talking real.
Trying to best. You um, you mentioned security a lot. Um, about how important is that, you know, on a site out of mind type thing? Uh, because these data centers are critical to, you know, if they want to go against J K Morgan or something. They're gonna target the data. Are you aware of any security issues or them being targeted?
Uh, none being targeted. They they behave like uh they're and sometimes the mistakes. So New York Stock Exchange, they have uh. German chekers, you know, checking your car when you win there and they have uh, you know, uh very heavy security forces. And some of that is also good for the secret exchange. It's obviously very important, but it's also uh, you know, critical for their their operation. Um, I can't think of any security instance that, I mean, most people, the Mawas were at New York Stock Exchange. Most people have no idea what it is. It's a the building behind landscaping with little walls and it's a brick facility and it looks nice. It's an architectural brick facility, but. There's really, most people don't even know it's there. They're not gonna advertise. There's no signage, not gonna advertise. You know, we have, we're sharing information. We have N D As with our. Uh, uh clients, but uh, you know, it's it's just, it's meant to to be there kind of out of sight, out of mind, but but certainly.
How about impact on the power grid and have you done any studies to see that having power here? My question is whether any studies or the actual impact on the power grid, whether it would have any impact on any of the other existing infrastructure.
Okay, so G C P N L is in the middle of doing a detailed study uh for us now to really, it's mostly about cost and what it's gonna cost to have. Utility drop down, but it's it's part of the transmission system already. There's no, there's no new generation required. Uh, for this particular use, because of where we are, uh some some facilities you have to run, you know, new utilities, miles and miles and miles. Get to where this facility is, but now that we're directly related to transmission, um this is uh, you know, it's it's taking advantage of what's there already essentially. We actually, in our New York Stock Exchange facility, rerouted transmission lines underground onto our property and there's two electrical substations. That are on the property, you know, underground transmission level of power.
Excellent.
I'm so quiet, right? Um, so is there any commitment from the utility to upgrade to Andrew's point, the existing like. Um, transmission cables and dynamic line rating sensors?
So the the I'm not familiar with the 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 sensors that would be needed or required, but certainly. Um, you know, there's no upgrade to the existing cable and we don't have our final study, final, final yet, but. With our conversations with the utility and just knowing from other facilities, it's essentially, it's it's really a drop down of one of the uh. But, you know, sliced transmission lines, that's gotta be brought. And then we are going to be uh building the substation at our cause alongside. Uh, so in our experience, uh anything the utility gets to provide that is specific to your uh use. We end up paying the utility for in those cases. So we have to extend, you know, it's not the case here to extend a line a mile down the road. We pay for that upfront. And uh, so there's actually no additional cost.
But it's the substation, you know. What does the substation do?
Thank you. It converts the power from the transmission level voltage down to a voltage that can be used by the equipment and the servers in the facility. So like most of the street power is thirteen or thirteen to fifteen KV, bill volt power. So that substation will convert that power at two thirty KV down to uh thirteen KV. Which can be then converted again inside the facility to, you know, via four thousand volt panel or something like that.
Goes on the transmission line to the substation, substation to a transformer, transformer.
Somebody's been doing his homework.
Okay, um, so, and I have a question. In this. How many meg- megawatts or whatever is this whole concept?
So um, we have a study into the utility for four hundred and fifty megawatt load. Um, that is what we believe to be the maximum load possible for this particular area and location. So. Um, not certainly we would need that level of power, but that's what we've asked.
So how many servers is that?
That's that's a tough one. I don't know that question, but it's uh.
So how many do you see in that in that square foot in terms of?
How many servers? Uh, usually about half of the floor area is white space and the other half of the area is the equipment to back up the infrastructure. So. Um, I would say about a hundred fifty thousand square feet.
You're gonna have a hundred, roughly a hundred fifty thousand square feet of servers cabinets.
Yes.
Which will have servers in them and then a hundred, roughly a hundred fifty thousand square feet of white space, which has nothing on them. Those are basically the aisles you can walk in amongst the server cabinets.
That's right, yes. And server cabinets could have fifteen, twenty servers in each individual cabinet, right?
So it's a large facility in all facilities, all facilities.
If it's a large facility or a small facility or a medium facility.
So it's not, it's not the hyperscale, you know, millions of square feet that you see from the Amazons and the 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 Googles and the Apples. But for financial services firm for this market, it's it's on the larger side, they're put in appropriate size. Most of our facilities, our largest is four hundred thousand square feet. Our smallest is one thirty, but most are in the two, three hundred thousand square foot range.
And you don't have um a client in mind for this?
No, you don't have a client in mind for this.
Thank you. Sorry to interpret. And then other questions from there? I'm shocked. Happy to be normally hearing everything you say.
The acoustics, yeah. Oh, um, do you have, are there any plans for natural gas turbine?
No, that's typically not.
Why not?
Let's use. Um, it 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 the the uh uh, it is reliable. So like, we looked at natural gas for. Generators in the past instead of uh diesel, but you can't stop. These generators are three megawatt generators. They're very, you know, large. Uh, engines that uh really are optimal for for diesel, but we have not uh, we have not considered natural gas turbines.
And some are using that though.
Some are.
And that's to take.
Uh, it can be, sure, yeah.
If it's a co-gen situation, then yeah, right. But this is a opposed.
Can't hear you either.
Uh, John can't hear us.
Uh, she was asking about possibly going to natural gas. I was commenting that they aren't proposing anything with a co-gen setup. That would help subsidize power in the grid. They're looking to go right to the high voltage and not have any issues in effect our town pretty much at all.
Your message is a lot of space. Uh, is would that, is do you expect that to be? Users of a data center or an independent office space or does it?
Oh, it'd be used with the other of the data center. Uh, it would not be, there are, these facilities don't want any third party people there.
An office is not using the data center, it's not gonna be able to afford the next.
That's right. I'm I'm familiar with uh Bear Stearns.
I could, you're smelling with what?
Bear Stearns.
Whippity.
They they, that was a disaster recovery center. They they were expecting to be able to. Operate for that.
Yes. Right.
And it was the data center.
So that's just. We had the same, so there there's um, never used it, but Credit Suisse, when they built the data center, we built this for them in uh in booked in two thousand and twelve. They had uh seven hundred seats. In as a disaster recovery facility in case they lost their Manhattan facility. They never.
Right.
Had to use that, but that is a disaster recovery sometimes and that's becoming less and less as people are working remotely, working from home. They have the ability to work. And fully be supported at home now. So the disaster recovery market has gone down dramatically.
And it's getting heavier, louder.
Do you have, uh, did you talk a lot about how to, have any issues with getting the data in and out?
So there's multiple.
I have any problems getting the, it's gonna take the minutes. So you have any problems getting the data in and out through the internet, I believe, request internet access, yeah.
Right, so you have to, you usually have multiple uh points of entry into the facility from fiber outlets that are in different locations coming into the facility. Certainly Bloomberg, for example, they had um uh three different routes and actually built a route across the uh. Old avenue, you know, the Cuomo Bridge in uh in New York to bring the uh infrastructure in for telecom. So it is truly. It'd be up.
We have to arrange that at some point.
It's a range ahead of time, yeah.
Who's the provider for that and is that, is that a concern like the power transmission?
It can be, but there is dark fiber that's been run out in this in this area. Dark fiber just means you don't have, it's actually better. You don't have a particular user or thicker company that operates that fiber. You can lease the fiber and then have another service come in and provide. You know, additional uh connections and services from there, but dark fiber um is, you know, usable and unique for uh for data centers.
Anybody else in the board? Warren, um. With AI technology, moving data center, is this site configured to be its best potential? I'm sorry, to be its best potential, the size, is that, are you building out this entire site?
Yeah, so this, well, the thirty six acres is is appropriate for that three hundred thousand square foot um uh facility. You know, the the one issue with New Jersey is the cost of power is high compared to other parts of the country. So you're not gonna, you're not gonna have these gigawatt necessarily. Facilities that are uh, you know, locating in New Jersey because the power cost is a little bit higher. So some people that are in New Jersey are here because there's another reason they want to have to be here. Uh, financial services being the most, you know, uh, used of of.
Rather.
Center prevalent, yeah, thank you. Uh, but, but um. This, this data center is certainly appropriate and consistent with other data centers we've built.
And members on the public, got any questions? Come on, on up.
Just up here?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's not nice and loud.
Hi, I was just doing some really quick data.
Can you identify yourself?
I'm sorry, James Ward.
You're a township resident?
Pardon me?
Are you a township resident?
Yes, I am. Uh, I was just briefly looking on Google for impact on data centers. And one you mentioned, there's a huge um power consumption. You said you were going to do a substation. Um, on that note, do you have any future plans, if you've got this past of expanding? And you would need like obviously more power to, you know, for your center.
Uh, it's it's, I think it's very unlikely if we get four hundred and fifty megawatts approved that use more than four hundred and fifty megawatts for this site. It's it's not large enough to. Accommodate more than that. So I think we'd be fine with the power with that, uh, you know, first day, having the ability to have transition service.
Uh, the other thing uh I was reading about, it uses a lot of uh water consumption for cooling.
Possibly, yes.
Um, did you do any impact studies on that?
So we would go to the D E P uh if this was approved, if you had a a water cooled use. So some, there there's air cooled chillers, there's water cooled chillers. And the market's moving away from the water cooled solutions of the days of meeting, um, you know, larger amounts of water. Are um becoming fewer and fewer, but we can certainly, if you got a a tenant and we need a certain amount of water for chilled water solution, we'd be getting approval from the.
What would be the alternative from using a water chiller?
So it's one air cooled chiller and yeah, it's 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 a, it's water is, sorry, yeah. So water cooling is um, you know, more robust. Uh, the air cool is a little more flexible, so you can. You can move it around the facility, use it in different areas of the facility, and most are gone with the air cool solutions now, it's supposed to be.
Um, they also mentioned there's a noise issue with data centers?
So um, it's not a noise issue. I mean, the noise that comes from the facility. Um, is either uh emergency generation, which you have to meet the noise codes, the safe noise, so we have to meet the safe noise code in any. Especially with this residential, so we had our data center in Orangeburg is a hundred feet from the residential development. And we met the the noise codes there. So the, you do different things. The, you're gonna have the generators outside, you have enclosures that. Uh, you know, certainly uh uh reduce the sound level of the generator. You're not having a generator that's outside and operating. The uh other fans, the equipment is another thing, which require fans are all things that are done in the data center design that keeps the noise down. A very low level. The seventy being here, you never hear anything from uh from this facility compared to the highway.
Now, how are you handling the e-waste?
The what?
E-waste, electronic waste, like just old, old servers and, you know.
Yeah.
Electronics.
So uh that's our tenants typically handle that directly. We don't get involved in that, but they they have a program of recycling. Uh, keep their servers.
So it have no impact on the town?
No.
That's what I wanted to know. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else on the public? Just give us your name and typically.
And speak loudly.
Rick Connect, Orangeburg, New Jersey. Um, quick question.
Say that again, spell your name for us.
K M E C H T. Perfect, thank you. Uh, a question, four hundred and fifty megawatts, how is that affecting the environment?
Can't hear you.
The question was four hundred and fifty megawatts outside affecting the environment.
It's no different than any other, you know, power you're using, environment in which way. Oh, sorry. Yeah, in in which way would you? Be referring to as far as affect the environment?
I just think that's a huge amount of heat that that's gonna be putting out.
That's a huge amount of heat that you're gonna be putting out as the content.
Well, it doesn't leave the facility. The facility is cooled by the operation of the facility itself. Uh, the power is there to, you know, provide the 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 requirements for the servers and it really, the power is the cooling as well.
But there's a heat exchanger going on, so the power's coming in, that power has to be used and dislocated some, something.
Well, yes, I mean, it's in in a cooling tower, for example. It's a, there's a, for a cooling tower.
He's gonna ask you the questions. You're gonna answer.
Sure.
Facing the board secretary.
Sure, sure, sure. So.
He can hear you because.
Yes. Um, so for cooling tower, for example, there's this uses evaporative cooling, so. Um, uh, seventy five percent of the water that's brought to into the facility evaporates, uh, which is what is part of the heat exchange process.
Is there any damage to the environment as part of that process?
No. It's just vapor. So as any, you see cooling towers in offices happen as well. It's just vapor that evaporates into the atmosphere.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public? Who wants to go in twice?
And so what township, mayor and the township committee want to know your feelings on this, not simply to ask questions. So my suggestion is to go around the room like we were doing at deliberation and get your thoughts. And this is a good idea, a bad idea. You have concerns, you don't have concerns, any suggestions, blah, blah, blah. Nice and slow and loud for the board secretary to take notes for the minutes. Now, I'm also gonna suggest that the mayor and committee, you know, listen to the recording. But that's why I keep your voices up and as you're speaking, look to the owl. All right, wanna go around the horn?
Sure. Uh, good idea. I'll make suggestions when there's an application. I don't find it inconsistent with the master plan.
We're talking about making suggestions in a site plan when there's an application.
Right.
It's a good idea to. To amend the order.
I do.
Yeah, I think it seems to be a positive, seems to be a a positive solution. Um. I'd like to see the results of the studies that are in motion.
Right, but you wanna see the results of that study before the township considers introducing an ordinance or you? You think it's a good idea they should introduce the ordinance now and that's part of site plan?
Um, I think should see the results before the ordinance would be approved.
I I think it's a good idea for the township. Um, I mean, in principle, it sort of bothers me that such a facility needs so much power, but. That's, that's where we live today. AI and uh and the data centers for New York. And those, those needs are gonna be met somewhere and I don't see any particular one directed at our township. I think to amend the term. I think to amend the town zoning ordinance to allow for something of this kind of use, doesn't have to be. What the gentleman has described here tonight, we're not looking at a particular building.
Correct.
Process education, so I am in favor of amending the zoning ordinance to allow for this type of facility.
And that's what the draft ordinance does, in fact.
Any comments?
No, I agree one hundred percent with you, I think we should amend the ordinance accordingly. I agree also.
I don't know, can I chime in?
Absolutely, uh, yes, I think that we should be amending the ordinance to allow.
I think it's a good idea, but I'm with Andrea, I'm not sure about the power, what happens, what could go wrong and what affects the resident? That's my concern.
Well, let's ask the power expert on the board, basically.
Uh, in this case, I don't see any problems with it. Loud, the way they're tapping into the main transmission lines, it's not going to affect our town, really. I mean, unless the East Coast goes out again like it did back in the what, old Sticks or later, whatever. Yeah, way back, yeah. It's not going to affect us.
Can you think of anyone to benefit of your background and experience, who are, you're a new board member?
Uh, I've been power generation with generators for over twenty years now. Uh, anything from presidential inaugurations to actually Yards Creek, that's on this plan, I've been there. I've worked on their generator, so uh fairly familiar with the grid. Uh, and then, wait, well, my bigger concern is making sure they can keep the noise down, uh facility, especially. They're proposing four hundred megawatts power, that's quite a few generators, huh? So, I mean, I'm all for it, as long as in the end their site plans work out, but in terms of the ordinance, I, I agree, it should go through.
Eric, uh, I'm also going through, one thing kind of jumped out at me, I'm thinking about, there's a couple of facilities up in Franklin, when we talk about. It says here, uh, data processing facilities, we want to add in verbiage of electronic. Data processing, those two to eliminate places like Archive up in Franklin, which has very large facilities, that's a lot more truck traffic. Because you have paper copies going in and out. Turning that access? Access, it used to be, yeah.
Yeah.
Archive now.
So your suggestion is that the word electronic be added to the ordinance or something to make it crystal clear? That we're not talking about paper data processing.
Exactly.
And we're talking about electronic data processing.
Yeah. I mean, I could, that could also go down to, you know, sh- shredding of facilities.
That's an excellent point.
And that was fine, with our perspective. Perfect, and I completely agree too, I think it's a great opportunity and look forward to the site planning in the future.
Yeah, all right, with that said, someone want to make a motion to recommend that the draft ordinance with. The addition of specifying electronic data processing. Be recommended to the mayor and township committee, someone want to say something? Yeah, now this one, this is not under the N L U L, so I mean, not. You can do everybody.
Mr. Scandary?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Tchillo?
Yes.
Baller's not here, Ms. Cullen? Yes, Mr. Farmer?
Yeah.
Ms. Sherlock? Yes, Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Blunt?
Yes.
Mr. Bradlaw?
Yes.
Ms. Parker's not here, Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Colderjohn?
Yes. Thank you all very much, thank you for your special meeting, and I may be hanging out for a little while, so.
Yes.
Which is good, because you and I can talk about something else after this meeting.
Oh, no. We all say that.
Is that the element of the?
All right, next board meeting is April tenth, seven thirty, our normal meeting, the meeting is at the Greenwich Elementary School. All right, so just, we all got emails for members of the public, Greenwich Elementary School is where the meeting will be. Should have plenty of room for everybody for continuation of what we've been working on.
And it is on the township website.
All right, motion to adjourn? I'll go to Gary, I'll second, no favor?